All right, welcome. I'll call the special meeting on the Federal Way City Council for August 8th, 2023 to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And two of our council members are out on excused absence on vacation and other duties. So that would be the council president, Linda Coachmar, and council member Jack Doby. They're excused. We'll do the same at the regular city council meeting. So today, we are here for a special study session for the broadband and planning study final report. First, we'll have a staff report from Thomas Fitcher, our IT director, and then we'll have a report from our consultants from Government Technology Group. With that, Thomas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Council members, pleasure for having us tonight and giving you this kind of culmination of a journey that we've taken to get here. So I'm going to share the screen here. We're going to do a little bit of a hybrid, so it's kind of a presentation all in one. I'm going to start and lead off, and then I'll let Preston kind of take over from there. So. All right, so we're going to talk about several items tonight, as you can see on the agenda here, kind of the history about Government Technology Group, the consultant firm that we hired, accessibility study overview, leveraging existing assets that we have, deploying new assets, policy in governments, partnership opportunities, and any questions that you may have. So how did we get here is kind of a good question. It kind of all started, I'd say, with Tim Johnson, and he kind of wrestled me in one day, and he was like, we got to figure out this fiber broadband stuff here. And I got an idea. There's a grant from the Community Economic Revitalization Board from Washington State, and I'm going to apply for it. And I said, good, you go ahead and apply. And he did. He ran it through the council process. Council authorized in September of 2021 for him to be able to do that. And then he applied. We got it. It was a $50,000 grant with a $25,000 match. And then in December, we formally accepted the grant, ran through the paperwork. And then in March of 2022, council authorized the request for proposals to go out and select a consultant for this work. And in May, we were able to, we got a couple responses. We selected Government Technology Group and put that before council for approval. You guys approved, and in May of 2022, we had our first broadband advisory task force meeting. We formed this as a requirement from the state grant that we got, and we conducted 11 meetings over the next year. And we got a lot of discussion. We put a survey out. Preston's going to touch on some of that information. And here we are, delivering the final report to you tonight. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Preston Young with Government Technology Group, and he'll walk you through the rest.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, city council members, other city staff that are here. Thank you for the opportunity to come and tell you kind of what we found out as we did this study. To start off, Government Technology Group is formed for us together. I come from the private sector. My entire career has been spent working with the big incumbent companies, overbuilding, deciding where to overbuild, where not to overbuild, how to construct it, budgets, that kind of thing. Jeff Lewis is the other principal on this project with me. He comes, he was a CIO down in the City of Concord, Modesto, and Manteca down in California. So he comes from the government side and understands the government side of things, you know, the bureaucracy, the needs, how you run things through councils, and how you get policies going. And, you know, there's a whole government side of things that I was never that good at. The other two, Clancy Priest and Mark Gunther on here, are, they're kind of writing help. They help us write, they help us formulate, make sure everything looks good, and that kind of thing. They add a lot of content. So that's us as a company. So when we started, what we kind of found out, or what we found for the current environment, is that the city already has a lot of fiber optics already in the ground. And we're, I'll show you a map in just a minute, kind of how much there is. There's a significant amount of infrastructure already in place. The uses that you can have for this are pretty vast. Right now, we have, you know, 5G was a big topic. Now it's 6G, and then it's going to be Internet of Things and smart city applications and other things that are going to be coming out that we don't even know are going to come out yet. But you have a really good backbone, a really good network already in place that can help support all of that stuff in the future. Another thing is, as the rail is being built, as they're expanding down, anytime you can leverage that and take advantage of that opportunity to put in conduits, put in fiber, put in whatever we can to just kind of help move that network forward. Another thing is policies. Cities need to adopt policies that help encourage people to build, overbuild, expand their networks. Like Comcast, Lumen has DSL, right? We want more than just DSL. There's policies and things that the cities can put in place that help encourage that. And that's kind of, one of those is called a dig wants policy. So if anybody's digging down a street, they let you know, or they let Public Works know and say, hey, we're going to be going down, you know, 320th. Do you guys need conduit? And the city can say, yeah, yeah, we want conduit on that street. And then they'll help put in conduit, right? There's different policies, developer agreements. If they're going to be, you know, developers are on big portions of land, and they're going to be touching the right of way, you can require different things. They can put in conduits, conduits to the buildings, different things that you can require as part of the developer agreements that help move and expand the network without costing a whole bunch of money. Master license agreements and pricing. I worked at Verizon for a long time, and we worked on the 5G processes and things down in the San Francisco Bay Area. And one of the big points or struggling points that we had as a Verizon, as a company, was MOAs that just didn't make sense. You know, you go to one city and it's, the costs are so high to attach to a pole, and then they have, you know, the aesthetic needs. It was just so cost prohibitive. And we encourage that the MOAs that you do going forward make sense and kind of help encourage them to build or not. Exclude them or make it so it's too costly, because 6G is going to be coming out. Everybody's kind of kiboshed the, you know, the expansion of 5G. They're still doing it, but very, very little. 6G is on its way in. As soon as that comes in, you know, you're going to have another huge influx of people building. And Federal Way needs to make sure that you're ready for that, whatever that's going to require. The number of towers is going to go up, and the number of antennas has to go way up, because 4G has a lot longer distance that it can go. Necessary additional staffing. This is kind of up to whatever happens as far as what you want to implement in the plan or will not, or whatever. But you need to have staffing that can help manage or at least take care of the broadband as it coming out. It could be one person that's like, hey, you know, don't forget, we need broadband on these capital improvement projects. You know, Thomas is a very busy man. I don't know if he can handle all of that. That's just something that we need, you know, you need to make sure you keep in account of and, just keep in the back of your mind. It doesn't have to be a huge, you know, a bat. It doesn't have to be a 20-person committee. It could be something a little bit smaller than that. So the key findings, Federal Way is fairly well-served. There was very few areas that didn't have good connectivity as far as residential goes. They could get, you know, it's what we call a hybrid fiber coax plant. It's a coax Comcast-type network. And for residential, it's good. People around here didn't have a lot of bad things to say about it, but the city is covered outside of one area. I don't want to name it, but there's a small area that's private property that is very difficult, and there's no good service inside of that area. We also found that because you're so well-served, any future type funding opportunities that require an unserved or an underserved, you know, piece to that funding, you're probably not going to get it. But there are other funds that come out. There's different, and I mentioned it later in the report, but through the Washington State Commerce, they have their broadband committee website. They have a lot of funding opportunities that they track, and you can find good information out on the Washington State website. There's another couple things. One, there's a, it's called the ACP, the Affordable Connectivity Program. It is very underutilized in Federal Way. Most cities, it's very underutilized. But what that is, is the federal government will subsidize $30 a month for broadband to residents. Give you, they also give you a one-time, I think it's $100 or $110. You can go out and buy a device, and they'll reimburse you $100 or $110 for a device that allows you to access the internet. I'll go through some of the numbers in just a little bit, but that's a program that needs to be just kind of talked about and shared and make sure the public understands that it's out there. A lot of connectivity comes down to cost. They just simply can't afford it. But with this program, they can, hopefully they can. So that's one thing that we found. So as I said, the broadband office in Washington State, we, I was in contact with them a few times during this process, and they're a very good resource. They try to keep everything up to speed. If you have questions, you can ask them. If you have ideas, you can share your ideas with them. They like to collaborate, they like to put people together. It's a very good resource. Another one that we really found a good resource in was Darrell Hunt over at the county. He had a, when we talked to him, they are focusing on what is the digital divide issues, and they're focusing on anything within the county that's unincorporated. So the county is relying on the cities to take advantage of and help promote what the county is doing, but within the city limits. And there's a lot of different things that they're doing, and we kind of go over that a little bit in this study as well, that King County is a great asset, and they have a lot of good ideas, and it'd be a great thing to collaborate with. So as part of it, what we do to start with is we have to kind of find out where we're at. So the methodology that we use is when you have to find out what exists inside of Federal Way now. What broadband is available? What companies are available? What can you, what technologies can you use? Is it just satellites? Is it DSL? Is it fiber? What is available? Another thing that we do is this broadband survey we do, it's online, and people can get on it, and they could take the tests or questions, and then there's a speed test button. You could click the speed test, and it automatically runs a speed test at your home, and it'll populate it within our study results. And so it asks people, do you find that your internet is adequate where you're at? Do you think it needs better? Is it reliable? And what we found out is, well, we'll go through a little bit right here, but Comcast Xfinity obviously has, you know, the lion's share of connectivity within the city of Federal Way. They cover almost the entire city outside of one little, couple little areas, but they have very good connectivity. Their reliability seems to be pretty good, but they're by far the number one provider in town. So this is what the average download speed. So if we look at, we'll try to hurry. Broadband speeds, if you look at the federal requirements to be considered broadband, it's 25 megabits download and 3 megabits upload. So that means if you're downloading something, you're trying to go to a website, how fast things are coming to your computer. Uploading is if you're trying to upload a picture to Facebook, whatever, how long does it take that picture to get there? They're not the same. Unless you're on fiber, they're not the same speed. And so this is what, during our study, this is what the averages were. Lumen, who does DSL, and if you're really close to the DSL hubs, you get really good speeds. If you're far out, you get really bad speeds. So their average speed was 61, and if you look at the far right column, that's what you pay per megabit. And that's kind of a standard that we use in the industry of, like, your speed versus what you're paying, is it a good value or not? As you can see, some of them really don't look like a very good value. Slow speeds, and it costs you a whole lot of money for that. So as we did that, we went through and we found what does a city itself own as assets? Is there conduit in the ground? What fiber is in the ground? Is there capital improvement projects that are coming up that can be leveraged and used to put conduit or somehow expand this network? Maybe put a tower up, whatever it could be, what is, what's available? And so what we look at that, and the reasons for a lot of that is, it's a lot cheaper to use something that's already there than it is to try to build something new. And I'll show you in a minute, when we talk about the high-level design piece, what the construction costs are. And these are obviously just estimates. They're what people charge now, but with the current inflation, you never know how high it's going to go soon. But anytime that we can find an asset that exists, it could be the city asset, it could be a county asset, it could be anybody's asset that's willing to either lease it to you, sell it to you, something that's cheaper, because it's just a lot easier to use that type of an asset than it is to build something brand new. And when we look at assets, there's also rights of way. Do you have really good easements someplace that incumbents could use if they needed to to cut through or get someplace cheaper or faster? There's different things, like spaces within, you know, sometimes there's building space, and you can use that to house equipment, and you can have, you know, a network that's based around space. So it's not always just conduit or fiber in the ground. There's other things. Vertical assets like poles, streetlight poles, traffic control poles, all lots, there's all kinds of different assets that can be used. So when we looked at what Federal Way has existing, you can see there's 378,071 miles worth of either fiber. Conduit, if you look at the map, it's the blue, the kind of wide blue line, that is conduit. And some of that is going to be put in as part of like the rail line, but most of it's existing. It's already in place. The orange, the skinnier orange line, that is what the city owns as far as fiber optics already, and that's a substantial amount. Most cities have less than 10 miles. So saying that Federal Way has 71, that's a feat. I mean, that's fantastic. And then if you look down to the bottom, it's just amazing the amount of assets that the city has. I mean, I was drooling almost, like, wow, I could do a lot with this network. This is a great network. Thomas, you did good. Or whoever else did it. I know you've been here a long time, but whoever did it, that was great. So this is the high-level design. And so I'm going to spend just a little bit of time on this one. So if you look at the black lines, that's what, that is what's existing infrastructure. That's either the fiber and/or the conduit. Focus area one is building to new facilities, or the facilities but building new. There's already INET circuits that go to the buildings, but this would be constructing your own path to these buildings. And you can see that that's actually not that much. And then on the next slide, I'll show you the actual footages, but you can kind of see how that can connect together. The white lines, that's building to schools. If you want to build the schools, you can. Traffic cameras, there is two of them I know that were not currently connected, so this would connect any traffic cameras or anything else along those paths. And then the diversity is anytime you build, especially a fiber optic network, you don't want to leave it with just ends sticking out into a road. You want it to be able to connect so it can loop back. And the point of that is if you have a cut or something, somewhere on any line, if it's a diverse or a redundant route, you can reroute it back the other way, and you're not going to lose service. You'll be able to provide service even when it's, you know, you have a cut or something else in the middle that's a problem. So the diversity, especially when you're dealing with city facilities, sensitive facilities, jails, police stations, things like that, you definitely want to have that secondary route. And that's, it's a very important thing. You don't always have to have it, you don't have to have it for every site, you don't have to have it for every facility, because all facilities are not created equal. But you want to make sure that the good hardcore facilities, the emergency operation centers, you know, police stations, fire stations, those have the connectivity and the redundancy that they need. So here is, if you wanted to build it all, this is the estimate based on what the current pricing is as of last week. $75 a foot for what we call new underground. That is when they actually drill or directionally bore, they have that machine, and it goes underground, and they kind of make it go wherever they want. 75 bucks a foot for that. Aerial construction, which we'll see, but it's only about 15. The existing conduit's 35. That's conduit that's already in the ground, but you have to put in fiber optic cables and splice it together and document it. You don't have to build all of these, all of these segments or all these focus areas. You could build one or the other. And this is what each individual one would cost. So you can see that if you want to just connect the cameras, it's fairly inexpensive, and if you want to get the city facilities, it's a bit more. So the dig wants policies, that's covered in the report a little bit. Partnership opportunities. If you have the opportunity to create a P3 or public-private partnership, it's a very good idea for cities to engage in conversations. You never know who it is that's going to come up to you. It could be Wave Broadband, who I used to work for. If they come in town, they say, hey, we want to overbuild. We definitely want to make sure that the city is aware of that and tries to engage and find ways to encourage that, because if they build it, you don't have to, and that saves everybody a lot of money. It could be anybody, right? There's a number of people that would love to come in here and build. There's ways to try to attract them, ways to find out if they want to come in, but when they do, we encourage it, and there's ways that you can go about it, so you don't have to give away everything, and you can get some stuff back. You know, hey, you can build everywhere, we'll give you one permit, a blanket permit, but you're going to supply all the city facilities with a redundant route. Because I know if we're coming from the private sector, if I could get a blanket permit, I would, it's worth its weight in gold. It is the most incredible thing. So there's ways that cities can encourage and help and, you know, get a P3 agreement without spending a lot of money or happening to support with a whole bunch of capex money that you might not have. There's ways to go around doing it. And so our recommendations, former designate governance committee, and that could be one person, or it could be a whole committee of people, but somebody or a group of people that can manage and maintain broadband as a utility. Most people don't look at broadband as a utility. It used to be like a luxury item, cable TV, but now it really needs to be looked at like power. It needs to be looked like water, sewer, all that stuff, because it's such a vital commodity for people to have. You can't exist without the internet anymore. You just simply can't. You have to do your online banking, your online shopping, your Zoom calls, you work from home. It's been so integrated into our lives that it is, it has to be looked at like on a serious level. And so if you have a committee or a person that can just always keep that and keep up on what's going on with broadband, smart city, you know, internet of things, that greatly helps be able to stay on top of what you need. Create policies and workflows, that is dig wants policies, agreement, you know, developer agreements. But the workflows is just as important. It's, you know, every capital improvement project goes through the broadband committee to see if we need conduit as part of this project. You know, if AT&amp;T or whoever is going to be building in the streets, we make sure that those permits get routed to the right people, so that the city knows if you need to take advantage of that, whether they're building or not. You want conduit put in there or not. But you need somebody that can do that. Technology enterprise fund, that's using PEG fees or other funds that would be able to help fund some of the stuff, the broadband, digital inclusion efforts. Incrementally build city-owned fiber network. So we have a really good existing network. If you wanted to build everything, it's $7 million or so. But you could build that a little slower over time and build to the things that are important. Like, I want to build just the city facilities, and not even all of them. You know, we want to build the public works, we want to build the police station, fire stations, everybody else will just take care of when we can. So that's incrementally building it. Developing a P3 agreement, if the opportunity arises, is very crucial when it comes to cities getting broadband in an affordable way. So we definitely encourage that. Work with the State of Washington Broadband Board. They have some very good information. They're very easy, willing to help and talk to us. They have a lot of good ideas, they want to hear back, and they would love to set up collaborations with other cities and help everybody work together. It's, they actually have a really good thing going on. And you can track any grants or funds that might be coming up, that you might be available for. You can go through there. And the last one, it seems kind of silly, but it's a good one for most people. Donate city surplus assets. Every city has computers, laptops, and stuff that they don't use at the end of the year. There's a lot of seniors, there's a lot of underprivileged youth groups and things that could, could and would use those assets. And it makes a lot of sense for the city to just kind of help give that little bit back and help those groups. And that's it. I thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Great job, Preston. Councilmember, Seifad Austin.
Yeah, I have several questions, but I can come back later. Thank you so much for the presentation. My first question is, where you don't see the lines that you showed on the maps? Are those broadband deserts, or are they, like, do people who live in those areas, do they not get broadband reception well? Or what does that really mean?
Let me see which one.
Like that one even, yeah. Or the one before.
Which one?
That one and/or the one before.
This one?
Yeah, either one.
So this is, so when we did, we talked to Comcast, we talked to everybody, and they give us a map, but we can't show the map, unfortunately. We're all under NDA. So this is just the city-owned assets, but Comcast has, I can't think of any place outside of, there's a trailer park that they, nobody really covers. Other than that, Comcast pretty much goes everywhere throughout the entire city. So as far as private assets, I can't show those, they won't let us, but...
Okay. So the whole city's covered, in other words, very well. Okay.
Yep.
And then, as we're talking about existing, the city-owned existing infrastructure?
Mm-hmm.
Does that really mean the city owns those lines, or is it shared with all the Comcast and all the other?
No, as far as I know, the city owns all of that. Thomas?
Yeah, for the most part, council member, that is a culmination of all kinds of different builds that we've done over the years, and also in-kind agreements. So for example, you know, so the, everything up and down 99 is all done with Public Works as you did Phase 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of the Pacific Highway widening, the HOV widening. That was all done with that. So the Public Works Department put in fiber as part of that project. You know, like, for example, same thing. Public Works put in down Southwest Campus or 348th to Southwest Campus, down and around to just past 21st Southwest. And then, like, for example, it continues, as you can see, out to Hoyt Road and then down to Dash Point Road. So that was all done with a in-kind agreement with Hoseo. And so we leased them some conduit, and they provided us some other, some fiber in-kind. Kind of same thing with this strip along 21st Southwest, same deal. First Avenue, we built a lot of that ourselves. So First Avenue coming from City Hall down to 320th, and then westbound, we did that as part, in 2005, as part of the Wi-Fi pilot project that we looked at doing. So we built that fiber. So again, you know, those are just a couple examples of things that we've done, and it's all been just different opportunities that kind of culminate into something that looks like this. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, it does. Thank you so much. And then what we're talking about, what we're doing in the future and what you're recommending, does it, would it sustain or support the added Gs, like 10G, whatever we continue to do, or is that something we need to worry about in the future?
Yes, no. So what, we always recommend a fiber optic network. Wireless, you know, is great short distance for, you know, one or two devices, you know, but fiber is the gold standard because it, well, the Japanese, I think it was in February, over one single strand of fiber, which is, you know, has a core of about point, what is it, eight microns? Mike, yeah, eight microns. They got 1.2 petabits of information per second over one fiber. That's a lot of information. For contrast, DSL would take 112 days to download the Library of Congress. That circuit does it in less than a second. It's, that's the difference, and that's over one single fiber.
Wow.
So fiber is, they're not going to, you're not going to outgrow fiber. And that's the point, or the hope, is that we, you build it with enough strands, and if you don't do strands, there's technology to multiply your strands using all kinds of different technology that will make your network, what they call future-proof. I mean, who knows what's going to happen in 30 years from now, but as of right now, best we can tell, it would be future-proof.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, hopefully it would, all of that would be great.
One more, one more question.
Sure.
So the $30 rebate or the 120 for equipment?
Yeah.
What is the income for that? What income level? And then how do they find out about it?
Find out about it is, I, in the report, I gave a bunch of links, but I can give Thomas or whoever, I have a lot of information about that.
Okay.
The actual threshold is kind of up for debate. What they do is they typically they go off of SNAP, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Program for schoolchildren. If you qualify... If you qualify for SNAP, you qualify for ACP. And the nice thing about ACP is you don't have to actually do anything with the government, you just call Comcast or whoever your provider is, and you say, hey, I qualify for this, and they say, okay, and then they do all the paperwork for you.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman McDaniel.
You actually might have answered a couple of questions I have. The first one I had, real quick, is the cost per megabyte that you had used, was that based off the survey?
No, that's based on data that we get for each website or for each provider on the website. Comcast, we actually got, they sent out their rates to us, so we used what their rates are versus what they're charging. And then the average download speed came from the survey, and Washington State also has a lot of speed data on their website.
Oh, sweet, okay. The next one I had, I think you might have already answered, so if it came to the network design layout, it sounds like fiber's the way to go.
Yep.
Is wireless even worth, I mean, because you're tearing up roads for the fiber for the most part, is there, what is your recommendations on that one? Is it worth the tearing up? Are there certain ones? I know that on here it lists micro trenching, it's got a boring, it's got open trench.
Yeah.
What is your recommendation on that one? And then is wireless working with like a T-Mobile or Verizon worth while to add to it, not just having, like you said, Comcast with the 60% ownership?
Okay, you just opened a can of worms, but I'm going to go there. I recommend that we build fiber to the neighborhood, and then they do wireless from the, from the neighborhood out to each house.
Okay.
Because the biggest cost killer for big companies is that drop that goes from the street to their house. It's so expensive. So what they do is, there's a, I don't know if you have heard of it, but it's one that Comcast, or not Comcast, Facebook has been investing in for many years, it's called Terigraph. And what Terigraph is, is you take fiber to the neighborhood, and then each house has its own antenna on them, and it's a mesh network that each house can talk to each house to each house. And so if one house goes down, it can just still reroute and go to a different direction. It's a full mesh network. But it eliminates so much of that last mile connection cost that, you know, residential people don't need more than one gig of service. You just don't. I mean, it's nice, you know, and it's a great selling point that people say, hey, I can get you a 10-gig circuit. You don't need it, you know? 100, 120, 100 down, 20 up is, for most residents, is going to be just fine for now. We don't know what that's going to hold in the future. As far as like internet of things and smart city technology, internet of things is the idea that in the future, everything will be connected by devices to somewhere else. For example, I diabetic and have this little thing on the back of my arm, and I scan it. Tells my doctor everything. He knows where my sugar's at, he knows everything. He can call me up, dude, what are you doing? Why are you eating that? You know, and I can get that. I don't have to talk to him. I don't have to do anything. I just, you know, just show me a little arm thing, and it's done. That's the idea of going forward, that's how everything's going to be. You know, smart traffic control systems are going to know where every car is at and where they're going, and it can reroute traffic and lights and stuff, so the goal is 70 to 80% green all the time. You get in your car, you go, you're not getting stuck at all these red lights. You have to have smart traffic controls for that, you know? I don't need to communicate with that traffic signal or that intersection or, you know, any cameras, it just does it all. You know, the refrigerator is the new center for the home, what they say, right? You're going to, your refrigerator is going to track everything in your house, anything in your refrigerator. You go to the store and like, oh, I wonder if I have milk, and it'll tell you, as you do, or no, you don't. You don't have to interact with that, it's just going to do it. Johnson Controls runs a program, and they do a lot with cities, where they'll go in and they'll automate your buildings. It doesn't cost you anything extra. They say that they'll pay for it with what they save you, because you don't have to monitor and go have somebody go over and turn the AC up and down. They do it. They monitor if there water. Do we have a leak? They know that there's a leak, and they can tell you, hey, you need to go fix this leak. And it just becomes, everything becomes so very efficient. That's the goal of internet of things. So you don't have to constantly interact, but all those things require bandwidth, whether it's going to be cellular or CBRS or whatever the technology, it will be wireless to an antenna, and then from the antenna, it has to have fiber.
Got you. So pretty much, Phil, you said fiber to the networks, then wireless from there out.
Yeah.
And then the L, the HLD, that was pretty much just strictly a city infrastructure? What's your thoughts on the city infrastructure being used for residential compared to doing a P3 agreement with people and staying out of that mix?
It's very costly and very expensive for cities to get into actually trying to support that network. You have to have what the, a NOC, the Network Operations Center that can track and monitor the entire network. You have to have installers and, you know, maintenance people, and, you know, Thomas would have to make sure that he's staffed up to, you know, be able to monitor and maintain all of the edge equipment that's out at the houses. It's very, very time-consuming and extremely expensive to get into. So even in California, where I'm from, San Francisco, there's only one city that has successfully done it, and that's San Bruno. San Bruno Cable, just south of San Francisco, and they lose money every year. It's really, really difficult for them to make any money. If you could, you know, there's ways to try to make it kind of work, but it gets very, very expensive.
That was it. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, it's nice to see you in person. And so I spent, last month, I spent two days with the National League of Cities Information Technology and Communications Committee meeting, which I am a member of, and we talked a lot about the ACP program, because it's, it's potentially running out of money by 2024. What do you know about that? And what do you suggest for, you know, one of the suggestions that we received was that every city write to our, our leaders in Washington DC about how important this is and the need to put more money into it.
Yes, I actually just heard about that last week, was it last week or the week before? And I haven't, I don't even know, the frustrating thing is they're putting money into so many other aspects of it, but they're not focusing on the people that need it. Like the digital divide, I'm a huge, huge advocate for digital divide, you know, well, not the digital divide, I mean, digital equity is what I'm a proponent for, right? Digital divides the problem, digital inclusion are the things that help close that, and then digital equity is what the goal is ultimately going to be. ACP is such a huge digital inclusion effort, because there's so many people that just can't afford it. It's just, it's a travesty that one of the things that they could do to really help that are the things that they want to defund, and, and I agree, write everybody you can. We write and talk to people constantly about this, this shouldn't go away. So unfortunately, I couldn't, I learned about that after all the report was done, but...
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it could be an issue.
Yeah, I'll talk to the mayor and to Thomas about the city of Federal Way sending out a letter, because we can't let the program go away. It needs to be funded for, for infinity.
Yeah.
And we shouldn't have to worry that in less than a year, this program may not exist anymore.
Yeah.
A lot of people will be without the, something that they really need.
Yep.
So, but I'd like to thank you, and before I forget, I'd like to thank Thomas and his staff and all of the committee members, because a lot of work went into this. And, you know, we have a report, and we know where we should go from, from here, so I'd like to thank you, and especially Thomas for his leadership.
And I would like to add to the ACP thing, I would call Darrell Hunt over the county, and I would definitely work with him and try to get those letters going. Talk to the Washington State Commerce, you know, and just try to get everybody you can involved, and try to get that, you know, that concerted effort going.
That's, that's a good point.
One thing to add to that, thanks, Preston, for that, that connection with Darrell and the, and the county. Darrell has actually been really good at getting us connected. As, as Preston had mentioned, the county is setting up a broadband action team, I believe is how they're calling their BAT, or defining their BAT. But at that point, Darrell's trying to connect us with them, making sure that we're, we have a voice or a seat at the table, as well as the state's broadband action team as well. So Darrell is, is, you know, he's under a King County IT, he's under the INET operations on the business side, but he's a huge resource and something that I think Preston and Jeff have also looked to. So county's a good partner for us as well, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, any other questions?
The other council members have done a great job asking the questions, so.
There we go. All right, thank you.